Check, check. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Planning Commission meeting. Today is October 9th, and I call the meeting to order at 9:00 a.m. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And can we get verification of legal notice?
There was a discrepancy in the time for today's first item. It was noted as 9:05, but it's actually 9:20.
Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda. I don't see anything. Public input. This is a... Anyone from the public can speak for three minutes about any subject of concern, provided that it is within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission and is not already on today's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. So if anybody wishes to use their time to... For public input, you guys are welcome to come up to the podium, say your first and last name, and write it in the pad for the record. I'm gonna take a look in the Zoom room to see if anybody... If anyone wishes to join us for public input. No hands? All right, no hands in the Zoom room. No one in chambers. We'll move on. Because our... Because of the discrepancy with our 6A item, it was supposed to be... Or it got... We got 9:05, but it was noticed for 9:20. So we're gonna move on to one of our non-timed items. Item 7A, Presentation of Cannabis Regulation Update.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is me, Raya Turner, saying howdy from Paulies Island, South Carolina. I appreciate the opportunity to bring an update to you regarding our cannabis policy regulation update. As the Commission is aware, this has been a three-hour... No, a three-year tour to update our regulations. And we've come to a point in internal staff deliberations where, though the Board was thinking that we'd have Article 73 done by the end of the year, there are a few items that we're thinking might take additional environmental analysis and may take a little longer. Also, I wanted to give the Board the opportunity to voice their position on possibly getting a programmatic EIR done for two of the top concerns that have been expressed ever since we started regulating cannabis back in 2014. And those two matters are odor impacts and water impacts. So I did get a... I asked for an estimate from the contractor, who's also doing our Lake County 2050 and is in the middle of the EIR for that process, just so we could kind of get an idea on what we'd be looking at. And I did only ask them for odor because it didn't actually occur to me to ask for water at that time. And so we did have that example. So I kind of surprised the Board a couple of weeks ago at one of their items by letting them know that we were working on this in chambers. And they expressed reasonable amounts of dismay and frustration and wanted to see a number of their top priority items still come to us by the end of the year. So staff got back together, started separating items that we thought would qualify for the common sense exemption in SEQA and setting aside the other things that might take a little more deliberation for environmental impacts. And so what you have before you today is a presentation of this sort of separate two-time tracks. The items that we think we can get done by the end of the year that qualify for a common sense exemption are increasing the setbacks from off-site residences, currently at 200 feet, going to 500 feet; capping a size of cannabis canopies allowed at 20 acres; establishing a process for the incomplete and stagnant applications for us to automatically consider them abandoned and get rid of them. This is a process that's already in state law, and we thought it was great. So we wanted to bring it to our regulations as well. Synchronizing with the state regarding qualifications and who qualifies as an applicant, as well as background clearances. And that is... The purpose of that is twofold. Syncing with the state on application... Who qualifies for the applications will add clarity that will enable the Treasurer Tax Collector's Office to have an easier time of knowing who is liable for taxes. And then adding the property owner to background checks was a priority of the Board. Next item, active warrant review for property owners and applicants. Initially, I was thinking this would make a good completeness item. However, subsequent conversations with the sheriff after the posting of this agenda require some clarification on that one. We can find... The Sheriff's Office normally does a check for county, like just their Sheriff's Office warrants. But we don't have access to the NCIC, I think is the acronym, or the overall... Do they have any warrants anywhere? Do the applicants have any active warrants, either in the cities or in somewhere in the state or in the nation? We don't have access to that information because that's limited to only law enforcement-related searches. And it would be a misdemeanor if we looked for that level of thoroughness for checks. So where we're landing is... Is if we are notified by the Sheriff's Office of any active warrants, which would likely only be limited to county warrants, then we're gonna put a hold on the application at that time. Method for calculating canopy, we're going to synchronize with the state. That is to help our staff when they're out doing the 150 annual site monitoring visits that we do, and we're calculating canopy. We will no longer have this discrepancy where we calculate canopy one way, and the state calculates it another way, and our permatees are kind of left in the middle sometimes. So that'll help with that. Setbacks for industrial hemp and cannabis. This is to also assist our staff when they're out there doing annual site monitoring visits because currently cannabis, which is regulated, could just grow right next to hemp, which is not regulated. So this will help us to differentiate and discern the what is cannabis for us to calculate canopy. Seen at corridor setbacks. Adding more clarity in those. Metric track and trace tag destruction. That's syncing also with the state. Adding clarity regarding distances or setbacks from the lake at 7.79 rumsi. So it's a... It would... That would be added to our 1,000-foot setback from public parks. Farm land protection zone, the suggestion that actually came from this Commission regarding greenhouse construction using anchor point foundations rather than a slab foundation to preserve more of our prime ag soils. The Board supported that one, and so that's in there. Setbacks from watercourses. This is another instance where we're gonna synchronize with the state. Construction hours, operational hours, and delivery hours. That came from the task force. Opt-out and reduced canopy process due by June 1st. This will actually codify that deadline rather than it just being a departmental policy. And by June 1st, that deadline has been working pretty well to assist CDD and Treasurer Tax Collector to work together to... In time for them... For the Treasurer Tax Collector to issue their tax bills. Opt-out not allowed for consecutive years. A little additional explanation on this one for con... Opt-out would still be allowed, but only one year at a time. Currently, for all the other use permits that we issue, if two years of inactivity expires your permit. The Department, within the last, I guess probably, what? Five, five years? Started this opt-out option for cannabis growers so that they could still remain active. We're gonna modify this now a little bit and codify it before it was just a policy so that you can opt out, but only one year at a time. So if you opt out one year, the next year, you may want to do a reduced canopy as an option, but you have to do something because two years in a row of inactivity will still now result in an expiration of your permit. And that is... That's one step towards getting cannabis permits more like everybody else's use permits. Voluntary termination of use for approved projects. This is to assist permatees who have wanted to get out of the business and not wanted to leave their permit or state license or something just hanging there. But currently, with state law, the permit... The use permit follows the land, not the person, unlike state licenses, which are different. Those follow the person. And so this is creating a mechanism through which permatees can stop their use permits. Expiration, two years of activity, just similar... Sorry, this is kind of repetitive to what I just explained for opt-out. Removal of the 10-year permit limit. That was from Board direction. And the $5,000 restoration bond. That came from Task Force, but it was also supported by the Planning Commission. The timeline, as described in your staff report, has also changed a little bit since the posting of this agenda. The informational update to the Board of Supervisors did not take place this past Tuesday, but was continued so that all supervisors could be in attendance. And that new date is now November 4th, I think. Informational update to the Planning Commission. Here we are today. We will start working on a draft ordinance of the items in the bullet point list that I just went over and have that to the Agricultural Advisory Committee on their October 27th meeting, as well as the November 13th meeting of the Planning Commission. And that November 13th meeting will be... That will go in the paper because that will actually have a draft ordinance by that time. And then that draft ordinance will go... Oh, so then we go... Yeah, so November 4th is the Board update. That next week is the Planning Commission public hearing. And then November 18th, the week after that, is the Notice Public Hearing for the Board of Supervisors. So we'll have to work quickly after your public hearing because the input from the Planning Commission meeting will have to be integrated quickly into that Board memo. And if they need to post prior to that date, then we'll make sure that the Board gets that as a supplementary addendum. So then, following on that staff report are just some of those items that we've set aside to consider or continue considering for additional environmental analysis. Air quality, water use, the prohibited activities, among which are odor, manufacturing, retail sales, some of the new permit types that were... That haven't... That don't exist yet. We set those aside, and that is the remainder of that list. The temporary cannabis events, onsite consumption, and... Oh, right, sale sales locations. The staff report goes on to talk a little bit further about that draft or the programmatic EIR option that I wanted to make sure that the Board has offered to them so that they can have a discussion about it. We've really never talked about an EIR-level analysis of impacts of cannabis. And so we wanted to make sure that they have that option. We have received some ecomments already, making note of the fact that this draft... Or no, the... Sorry, the estimate is from Placeworks, yes, because I could get it quickly, and also didn't talk about water, which totally agree. And so I... We will make sure that all of the e-comment, as well as public comments that's sent to us in written form, is collected and also does go before the Board for their consideration. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. I did have a question on one of the bullet points towards the end of your list there regarding the 10-year life timeline of the projects.
Yes.
I thought I heard you say that it would be removed. Is that correct?
Yes. Removal of the 10-year permit. So one of the questions that we've already got... Already received is what happens to all of our current permatees? Well, their 10-year permit would be removed, so they would not have to renew. They would also be considered going forward once we institute the new Article 73. Our already permitted... Or already permitted, yeah, cannabis-related businesses would be considered legal non-conforming. So we have limitations for legal non-conforming, even though their 10-year permit doesn't expire. Their permit would continue, as do all of the other use permits for non-cannabis-related businesses. The legal non-conforming does restrict them to their ongoing use, but limits any expansion. So should the businesses currently permitted desire to alter or expand their business operations, that could prompt them then to come into compliance with the new regulations.
Right. Yeah, and that was a... I think it's a good point to have that or to make that change because if they already had the opportunity to renew, I think the old wording made it sound like, okay, after 10 years, you can't do these activities on this property anymore. So it kind of seemed like it was kind of limiting the permatees on what they can and cannot do on their new wording. Kind of fits better. It seems a little more fair to, you know, to be treated like any other business that's... That can... They can just keep, you know, doing... Continuing their business and not having to renew and pay more fees and, you know, for an activity that they were already doing. So I think that's... It's a good... It's a good change.
Indeed. It's also another example of cannabis-related use permits sort of merging closer or margin... Getting a little closer to all the other use permits that we have in that the revocation, modification, and expiration regulations that we already have in our zoning ordinance would still apply to all cannabis use permits. They could still be revoked. They could still expire. And they would be limited to the existing legal non-conforming that's already regulated in our zoning ordinance.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks.
I just have a question. On this proposal, is this... Is this... I know that we don't decide whether or not we're gonna go forward on this. The Board of Supervisor has to decide that. Is that correct?
Today's item is a presentation only, so no action is requested.
Right.
However, you will have that input. Your recommendation will be requested when we do the public hearing of the draft ordinance.
Okay. So I understand this was Placeworks that did it. Is this... Is this part of their contract? Does this have to go out for bid? Or... Is that an add-on? How's it work?
Should the Board decide that they want us to have a programmatic EIR done? We'll take a look at the requirements at that time. It's very narrow scope on just hiring somebody that you already have. But if it does qualify, going to Placeworks would be helpful only because they're already doing the EIR for the Lake County 2050. They're extremely familiar with Lake County already and all of our processes. But we'll take a look at the... At what the guidelines are in the county policies.
And just as a budgetary question, $250,000 yaoza. I know the budget...
EIRs are expensive.
Yeah. I know the budget was just approved what... A month ago. Do we have some, you know, pocket change for this? Or do we have to have a bake sale? Or how are we gonna cover this?
Not that I know of. This has not been in the budget at all. So I'm sure that the Board is gonna have to take that into consideration when we finally do present this option to them.
Okay. I just wanted to know if I had to start baking cookies or something. Thank you.
You know, if you want to bake, because that's awesome. I'm never gonna turn that down either. But no, not at this time. Thank you.
Chair, I have a few questions. So with the EIR, then, as I'm hearing this, is that it's not absolutely necessary? But it's being recommended by CDD? Is that... Is that correct? Or...
Yes. I'm offering it to them as an option.
Okay. So then some other items also in consideration. We said that if the EIR happens, that of course, water needs to be included in that. And then I also questioned wildfire safety. If that should be included also in the EIR or at least in the... Considered in the revision of the ordinance.
I think that's a valid question. Should it be the consensus of the Planning Commission today to make recommendations including that? We'd be happy to include that in our presentation to the Board.
Okay. Thank you. And I bring that up because the other topic that didn't seem to appear in any of this materials is the use of generators. And in our last presentation, we had, I believe, that we approved a project that was before us. And it was introduced to us, this collapsible... And it was introduced to us, this collapsible solar panels on a trailer that's operated by batteries. So, and just after the fact of approving that project, you know, I began to think about that a little bit. Again, batteries can, can be a wildfire hazard. But I also kind of wonder kind of how that works. I know that in the past, we've also had situations where PG&E, where there's been an inability to, for PG&E to supply power. And so I'm sure in some regard, you know, we're looking for solutions for that. So one of it is this, you know, solar. But I also wonder what the impacts of that and, and the use of generators in relation to that as this industry kind of continues to grow and to find new solutions to problems, of course, such as I said, you know, with PG&E not being able to supply them power. So I'm just, I guess I'm questioning, you know, the, that around fire safety, as well as the use of generators.
Thank you. The use of generators is currently in the code under prohibited uses. And so prohibited uses, the topic overall, is on that bullet point list that's on the lower part of our staff report as the ones that we're still taking a look at those to see what sort of environmental impacts analysis would be appropriate. So, generator use has not fallen off the list at all, but it is included in the prohibited activities section.
Thank you. Also, in regard to the farmland protection zone, there was conversation, I know that occurred during the task force meetings, that doesn't seem to be addressed. It seems like, you know, here in this, we're just focusing on the item as far as the greenhouse, the greenhouses, and how those would be built on ag land. But, but I believe that there were some other issues also in the farmland protection zone conversation during the task force meetings.
Yes, subsequent board meetings, when we updated them on task force recommendations, they made it very clear to staff that they did not want to see any changes in farmland protection zone boundaries or soil types or anything, they just, but they did support the anchor points. And so that's why, that's what we're going forward with.
Okay.
I didn't want to put it in an ordinance if the board's already voiced a lack of support.
Okay, thank you. So, and then my final comment has to do with pots. I just know, again, in the evolution of cannabis here in Lake County, that we kind of started off first that there was a preference for outdoor growing, and it seemed like the industry wanted to plant in the soils of Lake County. And then that kind of changed back to preferring, a preference to, to plant in pots and bring in soil, and depending on the size of a cannabis operation, that could be a certain amount of soil that's brought in, in the pots. And I guess, again, you know, and just thinking through that, I just wonder what happens to that soil after, after the season. So, and how much, how much soil actually is that, that we're bringing into a site that is not natural, so to speak, to that particular site?
Typically, we do not regulate how a cannabis cultivator operates. You know, they make their own farming choices, like any other farmer in Lake County. However, when their project description does describe or does include the importation of soils, that's when we're taking a look to see if it's going to need a grading permit for infill, and we're looking at what happens with those soils also.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
So just a general question. If this proposal is, is not approved by the Board of Supervisors, for whatever reason, how are these top concerns that have bubbled up and predicated this question of odor and water, and now perhaps wildfire, going to be addressed, if not through this auxiliary report?
That's a very good question. So, as you'll see, we have increased the setback, or we propose increasing the setbacks from off-site residences. The board was talking about that as a way to additionally address, or more appropriately, address the odor impacts. And so because, so then we're taking a look at it as far as SEQA goes, and because it is an increase of setbacks, it is a reduction of possible impacts. And so that's why that one is included right now. As far as setting thresholds for impacts, that's the part that relies on the EIR. And also, Michelle might have something she wants to add.
Oh, I was just going to add, that's my understanding as well, that we would just continue analyzing projects on a project-by-project basis, as we do now. As Director Turner noted, it would, the PEIR idea or concept would be to establish thresholds for odor and some of these other items that we noted. So we would just continue as we are now without formalized established thresholds.
So, so if these thresholds change, they would apply to projects going forward, not current projects?
That is my understanding, yes. Already approved projects are, have entitlements.
Thank you. And could you give us a list of that, of the list that you went through of the various items that you did at the beginning of your presentation?
Sure, they're reflected on the staff report. The ones that we're looking at right now, it's pretty comprehensive, or it's kind of a lengthy list. But it includes increased setbacks from off-site residences, capping canopy at five acres, a method to get rid of incomplete and abandoned applications that aren't moving forward, adding the property owner to background checks, and then syncing with the state regarding who is liable for, or making it easier to identify who's liable for taxes, dealing with active warrants of applicants, syncing with the method of calculating canopy, separating industrial hemp from cannabis, adding additional information on the scenic corridor setbacks, not requiring them to keep all their metric tags for seven years, so we're syncing with the state on that one. Adding Clear Lake at 7.79 Rumsey to the 1,000-foot setback area from public parks, I think. Farmland protection zone with those anchor points. Syncing with the state water board regarding setbacks from water courses. Adding flexibility and details to the construction hours, operation hours, and delivery hours. Codifying the opt-out and reduced canopy process, as well as restricting opt-out to not allow for consecutive years of use, or opting out. Voluntary termination mechanism, add that in, because we don't have that yet. Removal of the 10-year permit limit and adding a $5,000 restoration bond, which also syncs with the state.
Thank you, I don't know how I missed that, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I just got a comment, I appreciate the syncing with the state. And you mentioned earlier, there was issues with which canopy is accurate when we're talking about permatees? Who's determining that? And when a canopy is determined to be out of compliance or not in agreement with the permit, what are the penalties, are there any penalties that are happening regards to those, I guess, kind of applicants being caught in the middle of the state and the county?
Yes, we have had a few instances where applicants or permatees have kind of gone a little crazy, and their canopy does not reflect what was approved in the site plan. A couple of those, we immediately initiate a meeting to let them know that this looks like a violation and we need to talk about it. And so a couple people have come in and said, well, the state came before you guys and said that I wasn't cultivating enough to even qualify for the minimum levels of my state license. So I had to do this much. And in that case, we verify that with the state to make sure it's accurate. And so we've modified their site permits, so long as all of the environmental analysis has included that expansion of footprint. Other ones, though, we have found that are not, not due to this discrepancy between the method calculation between the county and the state. And on those, we've also requested immediate meetings and immediate abatement of any canopy that is not in compliance with the approved site plan and overall limits that we have.
Okay, and then one last question, I remember a few years back, I believe it was Commissioner Hess at the time, asked for annual reports of what was happening on the ground in real time when it came to compliance. And is that something we're still working on, or are we going to, are we going to have the commission receive those updates?
So, yes, the current code would allow for the, or does say that the commission should review these annual reports. But we have found it problematic to schedule 150 annual performance review reports on a planning commission agenda. So we're still working on the internal processes that were, were doing that. We do take a look at these reports prior to our annual site monitoring visits. And we're trying to figure out a good way that we could synthesize this data to present to the planning commission in the future.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure, thank you, that's an important point.
Do we have any further questions for Director Turner? All right, no more questions from us, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have to open public comment for this item? Okay.
Yes.
All right, so we'll be opening public comment for this item. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, you'll be given three minutes. Please state your first and last name for the record. And I believe there's also a path there where you can also write your name down. Again, this is for item 7A, the presentation for cannabis regulation update.
My name is Bill Wilson, and I must say, it looks like South Carolina, it looks like Lake County.
Yeah, it's either this or a picture of my hotel room.
What I would like to see happen is each individual cannabis operation have an EIR, because there's so much difference in land and, and as far as the water, the closeness, I have, the USDA has done reports on that. And they're saying you really need to have strip filters, which is vegetative strip that catch, and they can be a minimum of 20 feet from the water edge, they can be anywhere from 30 to 150 feet wide. Unless somebody goes out there as an EIR person and says, okay, this is the slope angle, this is the soil. It all requires different distances. It's just somebody sitting writing a declaration, negative declaration, isn't taking that into consideration. We need to have each site individually inspected in order to keep the flow. I mean, cultivated ground, even with dust blowing, you're going to get utrification of the waterways, unless there are these vegetative strip filters. The USDA, along with National Resources Conservation Service, have recommended these for waterways. And Lake County says right now that Schedule 1 waterway is 150 feet setback, all other ways, waterways is 100 feet. That should be fine, we shouldn't go to less than 100 feet setback from any major waterways. Flow from runoff from storms, as what USDA says, it needs to be spread out, caught in these filter traps before it ever gets to the waterway. So what I am saying is we should not reduce the distance to setbacks to anything less than 100 feet. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning, Commissioners, Margot Cambara. This comment reflects an ecomment that I submitted this morning. And thank you for already touching on many of the topics that I, I have outlined in my ecomment. As currently structured and presented, I respectfully request that you do not endorse the following two items. First, changing the water core setback from 100 to 50 feet. Two, programmatic environmental impact report, the PEIR scope and proposal. The first item, reducing setbacks, can be detrimental to the conservation of hitch, chi, and other special status species, as well as to efforts to rehabilitate Clear Lake and its tributaries with creek restoration and erosion control. The direction to change some aspects of the current cannabis ordinance is confusing. Is the effort to rewrite the cannabis ordinance suspended? That has been answered by Director Turner, so I'll skip that part. Going to the PEIR, that can serve Lake County well. CDD proposes that this report focuses on odor issues associated with commercial cannabis cultivation. The vendor's proposal for this report is problematic, scope. There are other factors, as your commission has identified, that should be studied. Wildfire hazard and risk, water availability, traffic/road safety, and cumulative impacts. SEQA, California Environmental Quality Act, has an interest in these factors and others. Another concern, project design, limited public input. The vendor assumes public comment on draft and final report will be limited to grammar, format, and typos. The vendor will have response for public comments. Revision of draft and final report due to public comment will concur, quote, "as required," end quote. Evaluating public input for revising this report looks like a subjective process, not one truly open to public input. Vendor selected. CDD chose Placeworks to produce this report. Placeworks is working with a county on the general plan update and other county plans. Placeworks' performance on general plan support is lacking. More detail can be provided upon request. Budget, your, your commission has touched on this. What is the funding source for this report? County budget planning for fiscal year 2026 did not include this item. The narrative for recommended county budget presented in June did not cover this report. Estimated cost provided by the vendor is $228,000 to $250,000. And finally, governance and transparency. Will this report go out to bid? If no, why not? CDD has a cost estimate and proposal for this report dated September 2025. And so finally, I say, the Planning Commission and Lake County residents deserve answers before committing funds to an ill-designed project. Thank you for your consideration, and as always, your service and openness to public comment are appreciated.
Thank you very much. Do we have any hands in the Zoom room? All right, we'll take the first hand. I'll get a name here in a second. And please be sure to state your first and last name for the record, and you'll have three minutes. What's the name? Eric Snyder, check to see if you're muted.
I was actually wanting to make a comment on the next agenda item.
Okay, thank you. Second hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good morning Commissioners, my name's Angela Amaral. I would like to propose an addition to, to the revisions, if you wouldn't mind. And it would help strengthen CDD's ability to address sites with violations. I'd like to suggest adding a section on enforcement. Perhaps this can mirror the current, the current California Code Regulation Title IV, Division 9, Chapter 12 of Cannabis Enforcement. And perhaps it could include descriptions of what constitutes as a major or minor violation, remedies with a timeframe, fines for non-compliance, grounds for revocation, and the appeal process, just as a couple examples. But I think that's one thing that, that we really don't have in the current ordinance that may be helpful. I think CDD has said that sometimes they don't have a, a fee schedule or a violation laid out to go off of. So this will put everybody on a level playing field, and I think it's something we should think about, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment.
Just to be clear, at this point, we do intend to rely on the existing articles and so, and the zoning code that deal with revocation and, and some of the other items that Angela mentioned. Enforcement is also included in Chapter 13, and we'll, we'll probably keep that there.
Thank you. And one more hand in the Zoom room? James?
Good morning.
Good morning, James. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is James Anderson at Everview Law, and I represent a number of cannabis clients within the county. Today, I'm appearing on behalf of Benmore Operations, and I just have a few comments. Now, I understand this is updates. There's no action taken here, but I just want to point out a few things. First of all, I wanted to point out that the increase in setbacks may affect many existing permits and many, you know, potential applicants, and I would advise CDD to create some sort of waiver by nearby residences by which they could, you know, opt out of this setback if needed to create some flexibility for cannabis applicants. I can see a lot of situations where there might be one or two nearby residences who don't mind the cannabis farm that may be going near them, and I think that would provide potential operators a good avenue through which they can interact with their neighbors and potentially continue their permitting process. My second comment is with the 20-acre cap on cannabis canopy, and I would oppose that. You know, each of these projects is unique, and there's lots of spaces within the county where an operation that's larger than 20 acres is appropriate and can, can fit, and I think that cap net 20 acres creates problems. Moreover, having larger cannabis operations in certain areas in the county is more economical and more efficient instead of having smaller operations scattered throughout the county, if that's the case. So, those are my two comments on the bullet point list. My third comment relates to this programmatic EIR, and I think there's some issues with it, and I know Director Turner said that this is an option, and I appreciate that because, you know, as she pointed out, this is not a required way to determine a threshold of significance. So, I want to point that out first. There's other ways that the county can determine thresholds of significance for odor impacts, including, you know, relying on, you know, the existing SEQA appendix G threshold of significance. My other issue with the programmatic EIR is that in order to set a threshold of significance, there needs to be a qualitative or quantitative measurement, and I just don't know how that's realistic for cannabis odor, or really any odor in general. Unlike other, you know, off-site impacts such as noise or air quality, you know, such as particulate matter, those can be quantified, and I'm not quite sure that odor from cannabis can be quantified in the same way such that a threshold of significance can be created. And my concern is this creates a, you know, an opportunity for, you know, political opposition to the cannabis operators to, you know, try to create larger obstacles for a commodity that is already overregulated and already has to jump through more hoops than any other permitted operation in the county. So, those are my comments, and I know that there's no action required today, but I appreciate your time, and I want to thank Director Turner for all her work on this, as well as your staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Gonna take a look in the Zoom room, see if there's any more hands. Okay, we got one more hand. Maria Khan?
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. I looked through this, the, the P E I R, and I, I think it's kind of a lot of money to spend on just the sole focus on odor when obviously water and fire has also been a huge issue in this county. We're gonna basically be doing an EIR for those down the line, and that's just gonna be a lot of increased costs. I think it should probably be, other options should be looked at, which is what basically Placework did suggest, is that there are other, other options than doing an EIR for just odor. So, I think we need to probably consider that, just because $250,000 is quite a lot of money just for a study on odor, when really there are no great mitigation measures for outdoor grows, which is what we are experiencing. So, I think that that should just be considered. I also support the minimum setback of at least 100 feet from the water courses. We do want to protect our waterways, and we are trying to restore them. So, those are basically my comments, and I, I just want to thank you all for your time and your efforts on this.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any more hands in the Zoom room? Okay, gonna take a look, another look in the chambers to see if anyone wishes to speak on this item before we close public input. Seeing none, we will close public input and bring it back to the commission. So, that can, are, are there any other questions from the commission?
Yes, I just have a, a couple of comments, just to make sure that this gets on record to be forwarded, is that I agree that moving forward, whether it's an EIR or, or just further study on the impacts of, of the industry is wildfire should be considered and the cumulative impacts in addition to the water and odor that we've discussed already. Additionally, I would like to, or I guess I'd like to ask and would like to see some forward movement on the annual reports, as my fellow commissioner had brought up as well, that this has been an ongoing inability, I guess, to bring annual reports to the planning commission, and it is part of the article as written now, or part of the ordinance, and so I would like to see some forward movement on that as well. Thank you.
Do we have any further comments from the commission for this item? Okay, so that concludes this item. Thank you for the presentation, Director.
Thank you.
We will now take on our item 6A, which was scheduled for 9/20. The public hearing, consideration of major use permit, UP 23-03, and PL 25-63, for a 150-foot-tall monopole wireless communication tower within a 50-by-50 lease area containing support equipment for the tower. Location is 6720 Leslie Place in Lucerne. APN is 006-003-01. The applicant is Vertical Bridge VB BTS 2 LLC.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you today?
Good.
Okay. This morning, we have a major use permit for a vertical bridge for a cell phone tower located at 6720 Leslie Place. The project representative is present in chambers and has prepared a brief presentation following our presentation, if the board is okay with that.
Yes.
The project proposes a 150-foot-tall monopine communication facility that consists of 12 antennas, one microwave antenna, six remote radio units, one GPS antenna, two ground-mounted radio cabinets, a 48-kilowatt backup diesel generator, and a 240-gallon diesel fuel storage tank. The project location is approximately .82 miles east of California State Highway 20, located within the hills of Lucerne, and approximately .44 miles from the community growth boundary of Lucerne. The general plan designation is Rural Lands and Waterways Combining District, and the base zoning for this property is Rural Lands. It is located in the Shoreline Communities Area Plan and in Supervisor District Number Three. The project is located on a flat portion of grassland area on the parcel. There will be approximately 16 trees proposed to be removed, and the applicant has submitted an arborist study and will be donating to the California Oak Woodlands Conservation Program in lieu of tree replacement. The site is developed with a single-family dwelling with a detached garage. The proposed cell tower will be approximately 570 feet east of the existing single-family dwelling. The tower as proposed will be 150 feet in height and is designed to look like a pine tree to blend in with the characteristics of the existing landscape. As you can tell from the tower simulation photos on the PowerPoint presentation, that this is what the proposal will look like. The project was analyzed and reviewed for regulations, reviewed for compliance with the Lake County General Plan, the Shoreline Communities Area Plan, and with the Lake County zoning ordinance. The project was analyzed against Chapter Three Land Use of the Lake County General Plan and Chapter Five Public Facilities and Services. And also, the project was analyzed for the Shoreline Community Areas Plan with numerous policies and objectives. The applicant has designed the tower to appear to be a pine tree, given the remote location of the site and the tower separation from dwellings and road, roads or highways. The tower as designed is consistent with the policies stated above. The project proposes widening the existing driveway connecting the tower site to Leslie Place, improving emergency vehicle access during critical situations such as wildfires. The modification necessitates the removal of 16 trees, predominantly oaks of varied sizes and other species. The county is not recommending a tree replacement plan, but is mitigating the removal of the trees by requiring the applicant to make a concession donation to the California Oak Woodlands Conservation to not exceed $19,000, and this was on recommendation by the CDFW. The tower can be used by emergency service providers to disseminate information to the public regarding wildfires or other local, regional, or larger emergencies. The improvements to the driveway stated above will enable emergency service providers to access the property much easier than the present driveway allows. Any locked gates must have a Knox box installed to the specifications of the North Shore Fire Protection District per their comments on the proposed project. These systems are critical infant structure vital for public access to information, facilitating business growth, supporting emergency response capabilities, and enhancing convenience for both residential and commercial users. The initiative will contribute to the upgrade of cellular service coverage for both public and emergency services needed. The project was analyzed against Article Seven Rural Lands, Article 27 Uses Generally Permitted, Article 37 Waterway Combining District, Article 41 Performance Standards, and Article 71 Regulations for the Placement of Communication Towers and Antenna. And it is an allowable use with a major use permit per Article 27. Notification of this project was sent to 11 local tribes on August 24th of 2023, and consultation was not requested. The California Environmental Quality Act, a mitigated negative declaration, is the proposed SEQA environmental determination for this project. All identified impacts can be reduced to less than significant with mitigation measures implemented. Public comment period occurred from September 11th, 2023, to October 10th of 2023. The mitigated negative declaration was revised with updated information and was recirculated June 9th, 2025, to July 10th, 2025. The reason for the changes in that recirculation is noted on the first two pages of the draft initial study with the memo to the SEQA state. The mitigation measures are outlined in the staff report attachments to the draft conditions of approval and attachment three, the draft initial study. The SEQA initial study found that the project could cause potential impacts to the resources: aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, tribal-cultural resources, and wildfire. With the mitigation measures incorporated, the project is anticipated to have less than a significant impact on the environment. Recommendations. The environmental recommendations is adopt mitigated negative declaration, initial study IS 23-07, for use permit PL-25-63, UP 23-03, with findings found in the staff report. And the major use permit recommendations is approve use permit PL-25-63, UP 23-03, with the proposed conditions of approval and with the findings found in the staff report. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, I had a few questions about that fee that's being donated to, to mitigate or about, you know, the trees being cut.
Yes, you want to know how we came to that fee?
Yeah, so I mean, I, I looked at it and how it was, it was like 325 per inch of tree, so that's with a cap of $19,000.
Yes, so some of the trees that are being removed are multi-trunk tree, and with those ones, they have asked, and Mireya and the CDFW has agreed that taking an average, whenever one tree has like three trunks on it, taking the average and doing that, and also capping at $19,000 was because they have decided, or the cell phone company has made the determination, if they can not move over a tree, a tree, they're going to do that. They're gonna opt to not remove a tree. So, that's how they came to that determination.
So, I'm assuming they're going for the full 19, as there are a lot of trees that are being removed?
Right, so they're gonna try their best not to remove all those trees, but if they do, that's where the cap lays, is 19,000.
Yeah, 'cause I, I was just kind of doing the math, and it's like about five feet of tree that would get to the 19,000. So, anything, you know, that, that could be two trees or three. So, seeing that it was like over, like, was it like over 20 that were planned to be removed?
16.
16 of them?
Yes.
So, I assumed automatically that they were just gonna do the 19.
19,000. Yeah, I'll let the, I'll let the applicant's representative speak to that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I understand that they were, it was required because of the improvements to the road, and there's really no way that you can, you know, you have to make sure that you're able to get to the, that the easement is clear for any maintenance or construction, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Because if not, you'd end up damaging the trees if you didn't remove them.
Correct.
So, yeah, it makes sense. That was just one of my questions for that. If anyone has any further questions?
Yeah, so I was looking at the, the comment letter from Chris, and it didn't reference an actual cultural resource study that was done. It did recommend, it did say there was no study done. Was there an actual study done for this site?
You mean a cultural and agricultural?
Cultural resources.
Yes, there was, there was a study done for it.
Okay. And then, second, prior to ground disturbance, cultural resource plan, I've, I've never seen one. Is that something that we can take a look at? So, it's, assume it's gonna be when the actual work is happening. And so, at what point is that, that cultural resource plan gonna be submitted by the applicant to the county?
That is prior to any ground disturbing activities. It just means that everybody on site has had cultural and tribal-cultural resource training to be able to identify anything that could be determined to have significance, and it will be required for them to submit to us prior to any groundbreaking activity, saying that everybody who's gonna be on site will be trained.
And those have been submitted previously on other projects?
I'm not, I can't, I can't talk about what other projects have, but I am working with one right now, a cell phone company right now, that is required to submit that to us prior to ground disturbing activities, and it is part of their conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you.
I have a, a couple of questions or comments. So, on page 24 of the initial study, I believe that's where it was, it says, "To date, the county has not yet formally adopted its transportation significant, significance thresholds or its transportation impact analysis procedure." My question is perhaps a little bit off topic, but just wondering if there is a plan for the county to make such an adoption, or will that be considered in the general plan? As currently, it seems like we are relying on the California Office of Planning and Research Transportation Impacts, which may or may not relate to Lake County.
I will let Director Turner, if she is still on, speak to whether or not, what level of analysis is included in the general plan EIR, but you are correct as far as this analysis goes, and what we are currently using are those standards from OPR, the California Office of Planning and Research, for vehicle miles traveled.
Commissioner Rosenthal, I, I would actually prefer to do a little research to get you a much better explanation than I can do off the cuff right now. I know that there was a transition in a number of jurisdictions when level of service was switching over to vehicle miles traveled, and because, I think it was because of our air basin, we didn't need to switch to that, but let me, let me get that, and I'll, I'll respond to you via email to all the commissioners after this meeting, unless you prefer me to bring it back at a future meeting.
I think the email is fine, and then we can move from there.
Okay, great. Will do. Thank you.
Unless my fellow commissioners feel differently. And then, I also had a question in regard to the fire zone. On page one of the initial study, item 12, it says hazards, SRA, very high fire area, yet on page 27, listed under G, it states the project site has been identified as being within a moderate as being within a moderate hazard severity zone by CAL FIRE. So I'm just wondering whether this is a very high or moderate zone.
Let me look that up really quick.
So given the update of our fire maps that are, have just recently happened, I wouldn't be surprised if everything's in very high now. There's a very small percentage of our county that's even left in moderate.
Okay, then I also had a question on the roads in regard to the width and the surface. Just wondering if the width, surface, and design meets the forty-two ninety expectations and will support the seventy thousand pound fire apparatus?
So the applicant is proposing to upgrade the road, and that is within the site plans, and it will meet the forty-two ninety regulations on the property.
And then in regard to one of the comments that we received, while the neighboring properties are currently undeveloped, as one of the public commentators brought up, who is within five hundred feet of the project, will this project affect future development on the neighbor, on the neighboring parcels should they wish to develop?
I actually responded to that comment. That actual property is located, I think fifteen hundred feet away from the cellphone location. It's not within the five hundred feet or anything like that.
Thank you, that's all I have now.
Are there any more questions before we open public input? All right, so we're going to, oh, okay, we'll do the presentation first.
Samantha, if you want to come up, I will put your PowerPoint presentation on the screen.
Good morning, commissioners. While Trish is doing that, just thank you, Trish, for your presentation as well. And there might be some repeated information, but I do appreciate the presentation and for the consideration of our project today. My name is Samantha Herman, I'm here on behalf of Vertical Bridge, which is the tower applicant. They are an infrastructure company that builds wireless towers across nationwide. And they do allow for future colocations and for multiple carriers on one tower, which does reduce the overall number of infrastructure and wireless towers within a vicinity. And on Vertical Bridge's behalf, and referring back to the county staff recommended, recommendation of approval to the telecom facility subject to conditions, Vertical Bridge does also accept the proposed conditions of approval and supports staff's recommendations as well. The first thought is fine, thank you. And the telecom facility does meet county code requirements. It is consistent with the general plan, as Trish demonstrated, and it will fill a significant gap in T-Mobile's in-building coverage within the targeted service area. And the applicant has showed that the project will comply with FCC regulations for radio frequency emissions. And any consideration of the alleged health effects is preempted by federal law and is determined by federal regulations. The tower is designed as a faux pine tree and the site is surrounded by tall trees and located a significant distance away from frequent and public viewpoints. And as shown by photo simulations, which Trish has shown and are included in this presentation, the tower does blend in with its surroundings, and we do respectfully request approval today. I do also want to mention that seventy-two percent of households within the U.S. do rely on wireless communications as their only means of telephone communications. And two hundred and forty approximate million calls are made to nine-one-one every year. And eighty percent or more in many areas are from wireless devices. And the next few slides just show the significant gap in coverage provided by T-Mobile's radio frequency engineers. And so this slide does show the current coverage provided. And up in the northwest is that pink dot, that is the existing T-Mobile tower. And this is the only tower within five miles that we were able to identify. And this is, has T-Mobile equipment on it as well. And then this is the coverage provided by the proposed wireless facility. And this green does represent reliable coverage, while the yellow represents lacking coverage and just a less reliable coverage. And this would provide two thousand nine hundred and fifty-six additional indoor population residences covered with the addition of the proposed facility. This is just a side-by-side comparison of the two. And then this is just a map of the five-mile radius, and it does show the existing tower that T-Mobile has equipment on. And we were not able to identify other additional towers within this radius. And then the next few slides just show the four views from our photo simulations. This is the closest, this is within the property. And then this one is from Leslie Road farther south. This is also from Leslie Road, a little directly south of the tower. And this is from Leslie Road as well, and is a little bit farther south. And the applicant, and on Vertical Bridge's behalf, we have demonstrated that T-Mobile does show a significant gap in coverage in this area. And T-Mobile will be the first wireless service provider on the proposed tower. It will be able, available for colocation for future carriers as well. And T-Mobile's RF engineer did provide the technical support to demonstrate the significant gap in service in this area. We were not able to identify potential colocation options either on existing structures or existing towers in the area. There are no feasible alternative locations in a zoning district that would be more preferred under the county's code within the targeted service area. The proposed facility does meet the county zoning requirements for a new facility. No variances or exceptions have been requested. And based on the foregoing, we do respectfully request the planning commission's approval of the application. And we do concur with the sample motions that Trish and staff provided in their staff report. And I am here for any questions, and I appreciate your consideration, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Do we have any questions from the planning commission?
I just want to thank you for the photo simulations, very helpful, thank you.
Now we'll open up public, public comment for this item. If you wish to speak, give us a hand in the Zoom room so we know you're there. If anyone in chambers wishes to speak on this item, I'll take chambers first. So please come to the podium, you'll have three minutes, and say your first and last name.
Good morning, Chair Chavez and Commissioners, Margot Cambara. I just have a quick comment on something I just heard this morning. And if I misheard, my apologies. I offer a clarification on public resource code forty-two ninety, fire safety requirements for roads. I thought I heard that the applicant is only going to be making changes on the property. CAL FIRE's Mike Wink recently presented to the commission and clarified that forty-two ninety applies to the roads also leading to the property, not just to that portion of the driveway or the road on the property. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And do we have any hands in the Zoom room? All right, we'll take our first hand.
Hello, am I on?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, this is Eric Snyder. We have a number of lots which are in the vicinity of the proposed tower. I have a couple of questions. Two years ago, we were asked, we were presented a proposal for a mono pine pole. Is this a separate project? Are there two poles or just one? I never followed up on whether the other one was constructed.
Got staff tell me that it's just one pole at this location.
One pole, okay. The, following up what the previous speaker asked about the roadways, there are a number of very dilapidated roads going up to this site. And I'm wondering if there's any requirement on the developer to improve those portions of the road. That'd be Dixie Road, Dunston Road, and Farren Road. They're very steep, the grades are steep, it's very rough. And a number of years ago, when we proposed to the county to merge a couple of lots, we were told we would have to improve on the infrastructure. And I'm just wondering if there's any other requirements that would go along with this. And then one, just one last comment, I'm not opposed to the tower, but I'm just not sure when the photos of how it might look from Leslie Road, I'm not sure where on Leslie Road those photos were made. And that would be all my comment.
Thank you for your comment. And we have another hand in the Zoom room?
Good morning, Maria Khan, just to have a quick comment. The cell towers are not simply pieces of infrastructure. They are long-term intrusions into living ecosystems and cultural landscapes. Their effects.
I think we, I think we lost you there for a second.
Oops, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Can you hear me now? Okay, so I don't know what you heard, so can I start over with my three minutes?
Yes.
Thank you, good morning Chair and members of the board. Cell towers are not simply pieces of infrastructure. They are long-term intrusions into living ecosystems and cultural landscapes. Their effects reach far beyond visual impact or signal coverage. They influence the health of people, wildlife, and importantly, the integrity of tribal cultural resources that tie this land to its earliest stewards. For nearby residents, continuous exposure to radio frequency emissions brings legitimate concern. Federal limits address only heat-based or thermal effects, but an increasing body of peer-reviewed science points to non-thermal biological effects at far lower levels. Chronic fatigue, sleep disruption, cognitive and cellular stress, and these are not fringe ideas, they are under active scientific review. The harm to wildlife is even better documented. Tower lights and guy wires cause millions of birds and bat deaths each year, confirmed by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Insects, including pollinators vital to agriculture and native plants, can suffer orientation and reproductive disruption from the electromagnetic fields. Habitat grading, trenching, and new access roads fragment the ecosystems already stressed by drought and fire. But what's often left unspoken are the impacts to tribal cultural resources. These towers are frequently placed in high elevation or ridgeline areas, places that hold ceremonial, archaeological, and ancestral importance. Grading evacuation and trenching disturb soils that have never been surveyed under the standard required by SEQA or by AB fifty-two tribal consultation mandates. When such resources are destroyed, they cannot be replaced or mitigated, and they represent permanent cultural loss. The environmental consequences also extend to soil, water, and riparian systems. Tower pads and trenching can accelerate erosion, disrupt natural drainage, and threaten sensitive waterways like Schindler Creek, which provides habitat for protected species and holds historic significance for local tribes. Each of these issues, health, wildlife, hydrology, and cultural protection, meets the legal threshold of substantial evidence supporting a fair argument that this project will cause significant impacts. Under SEQA, that's enough to require denial of the permit. For the protection of local residents, the preservation of wildlife and watersheds, and the safeguarding of tribal cultural resources that define this region's identity, we respectfully, or I respectfully urge the board to deny this project and uphold the fundamental duty to protect the public and environment for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any more hands? All right, no more hands in the Zoom room. Bring it back to the chambers to see if anyone wishes to speak. Seeing no hands in the chambers and no hands in the Zoom room, we'll close public input and bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
I have a question on the forty-two ninety requirements. This committee spent a lot of time over the last many months talking about access for fire issues. So is it, we have a clarification, is, is the applicant required to make sure that there is full access to the nearest thoroughfare? Or what is the breadth of the requirement for that?
Yeah, forty-two ninety is required for the internal driveways only, not the whole stretch of like the public road, for example, leading up to it. And the applicant is proposing to meet forty-two ninety requirements for this project.
So it's possible that the road getting up to where the applicant's requirements begin, that road may not be compliant with forty-two ninety, is that correct? Is that possible, is that what you're saying?
It is a possibility, just like many of our roads in Lake County unfortunately aren't completely up to code with forty-two ninety requirements.
Is that?
And for a little additional context, Commissioner Zoller, we have no nexus or authority to require road improvements outside of the direct control of that permittee. So that is why we limit the road improvements to be, to the project parcels.
Thank you.
Yeah, although this is an ongoing conversation, again, this here seems to be in a very steep area where on the property itself, it's describing portions of the road that are in excess of sixteen percent grade. I guess I would like to, I was not able to go up and take a site visit on this site. I would refer to our, to our District Three Commissioner if he happens to know a little bit more about this area. But, but it does nonetheless bring up a concern as far as if fire apparatus cannot get up that road, should there be a fire. What is the steepness of the terrain that precedes getting to this parcel? And will that put anybody else in jeopardy?
So I'll say I'm not familiar with the area, I didn't have a site visit. But that does, the questions are valid, I believe, in terms of fire safety. I don't know how far the road is to the actual site and what, any response, but I believe Mike Wink did say their interpretation was it was required from the road to the site. So I don't, I don't know where, like Director Turner was saying, the nexus is to make that a reality. It is of concern, and so I don't, like I say, know where we would go with that. You know, if that's, that's enough to deny this, this application, but it's something we need to consider as a commission.
I would just like to see some more information about the situation. As we have all said, we've spent a lot of time talking about fire in roads and access. And, and to the point that you made, a lot of our roads are not up to forty-two ninety compliance. But when we have the opportunity to look at that, we should make sure that we're making a good decision.
I may offer just a little more information that may be helpful. The tower would also be unmanned as opposed to, you know, like a commercial facility or something where a bunch of people would be residing and living. And then also, one of the main purposes of the tower would be to increase emergency response for support services with allowing, you know, more data coverage or cellular coverage in the area. So those are just a couple other items I wanted to note. I don't know also if the applicant has any more information about that, but we'll defer to them as well. As far as staff's analysis, it is in compliance with all of the requirements that we do have that we're able to apply to the project.
So prior to the construction. So prior to the construction of, um, of the tower, obviously, the road improvements are gonna happen first of, or the driveway improvements, uh, tree removal, and basically making the site accessible to, when construction activities may begin. I mean, I would assume that they're gonna be bringing in construction equipment up there. And most of it is, you know, it could be heavy equipment to grade the, the driveway, to move trees and do whatever they need to do. I believe those are big enough, big equipment enough. Uh, I don't know if you can compare it to a fire truck. But I think maybe getting some, um, some kind of comment from, uh, you know, Chief Wink or anyone that can say, okay, like, you know, we could get up there, or there is a way that they would approve a vehicle getting to the driveway, and then from there it wouldn't be a problem to get to the actual site of the tower. I don't know if that would, um, you know, answer some questions regarding the accessibility to the site.
Yeah, if, if it's helpful, um, I know the project was referred to, um, Chief Wink as well as, um, Jack Smalley, our CBO, our Chief Building Official. And I don't believe that they had any adverse comments, or sorry, it was our former CBO, Bill Collins.
You know, they discussed about the, the road width, and it had to be like a turnaround at the, at both ends or something like that. But that's still within the project site. I mean, I don't have any concerns about the driveway, uh, but s- some of the commissioners do have concerns about, you know, access roads to the site, which I understand the, the county's position on it. Um, but that is something that we've discussed in the past about what can we do, but we can't necessarily force the applicants to do that, to make improvements on roads that are not within the property.
Yep, and I don't know if Director Turner or, uh, council has anything to add regarding your decisions in connection with, with that information. That's above me.
Well, I could just add, i- it just doesn't, overall, in this county, whether it's this project or any other project, it just doesn't make any sense at all to have a gap between, as far as ongoing, driving ten miles up a road. Once you get to that ten mile po- point, it's fire safe. But between, it could be five miles between, you know, an area and that point, that is not fire safe. And that just doesn't make any sense of keeping people safe and keeping our environment safe, especially since we live in an area of extreme wildfire risk and, yeah, and having so many acres of our, our county burnt, anyway.
Last thing I'll add is I do know that there's a residence on-site also. Um, so the site is already developed without residence. I don't know if, if we stated that already, so just wanna make sure you have all the information.
So there are, uh, already an average daily number of trips to that location, uh, which would be always remain more than what would be, um, due to the operation of the cell tower. The board has been definitely made aware of this commission's concern regarding the roads, and they are working on improving the roads as they can. It's up to this commission to decide if the concern regarding access is significant enough that you're unable to make one of the required findings for approval of the use permit. However, I would caution this commission in making a decision based on, uh, road condition, accessing the project, but outside of the control of the actual permittee or applicant, uh, in that if you play it out, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how that would affect a large number of these projects that are gonna come before you in the future too, because we do have a number of roads that definitely could be improved. As far as increasing road conditions or improving road conditions to meet forty-two ninety and forty-two ninety-one, it, it has been talked about adding that as an action or implementation plan into the Lake County twenty fifty, under the Health and Safety and Circulation Elements. However, that will be an ongoing action, uh, not necessarily a, uh, something that can be accomplished in the short term, given the extensive road network and the considerable expense in bringing these roads into better condition. So I would, I would caution the planning commission regarding making that the basis of denial of any projects.
Uh, I believe that if there was any, um, concerns, um, you know, brought up by, um, Cal Fire or, um, you know, the previous, um, building official, when they review the project, I don't know what conditions might have changed since. If the road has drastically changed from when this item was first, uh, you know, looked at, um, I wouldn't think there was much change. So seeing that there wasn't any really, like, big concerns by those, uh, two agencies or, or, you know, overseeing bodies for this project, I personally, um, don't really have concerns about the, the access. It is an issue in the county, I mean, we're very rural. And I think, like, it was explained, uh, it's gonna be really difficult to approve any more projects if we kinda go off of this, um, you know, that the roads don't meet, leading up to the project don't meet the requirements. Um, if the construction company, that's the contractor that's gonna be building these, has an issue getting up there, then I would assume that any other vehicle would have issues getting up there. And I don't know if that's a question that can be asked by, or that can be answered by the applicant. That if, what are their plans on construction? And if there's any setbacks getting equipment up, up those roads? Just to kinda clarify, I guess, kinda what our concerns are from the commission.
Hi, yeah. So we haven't had any contractors or heavy equipment up there yet, but our team has, um, been on-site and didn't encounter any issues, um, accessing the site. Obviously, they weren't in, um, larger vehicles like a, a fire equipment. I do wanna mention that the fire, it's, there, the tower itself doesn't propose a significant fire impact. I know it is a, a high fire severity zone. There will, during construction, um, it is, uh, implemented within the staff reporting conditions that a water, um, truck would be on-site in case a spark were to cause any fire. And so there would be water available on-site during construction to, um, mitigate any potential fire, um, starting up there. And the fi- the tower itself is constructed of non-flammable materials that would not, um, pose a significant fire, um, hazard. But we can definitely, once construction is started and once we do have larger equipment going up there, we can definitely, um, assess the roads and see if fire would have any, uh, issues accessing the site as well. Um, that is definitely something we can, um, communicate with planning with fire. We will be in consistent communication with fire and, um, our design will be up to fire codes as well. But so far, um, as it's been mentioned, there hasn't been any, um, adverse comments from, from Cal Fire.
I have a question really quick. Can you talk to me about who's gonna be developing your cultural resource plan once ground disturbance is happening?
So I don't have the exact, um, contact for the cultural resources plan. We did have a cultural resources survey that I can, um, if it wasn't provided, I can, um, resend that to Trish, and she would be able to recirculate that as well. But I don't have the contact for reconstruction.
And, and so you guys did hire the firm that did the assessment, though? Or is that from a previous?
Try Leaf, yeah. I can go back and look at it.
Okay, no, so, so my concern is, 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 this has been my concern for many years is, that, that assessment, if provided to the commission, becomes public knowledge. And, and if there is sites up there, we, we don't want that knowledge as a tribal person being out in the community because of the threat of looting. But where that hampers me is I, I can't make a determination on cultural resources impact, because I haven't been on the site. We had a, uh, public comment on tribal cultural resources, um, impacted. And that could be very well happening with the impact to the trees and to the ground disturbance. But if I, I can't see it, then I have to rely on staff to make that determination. And so with the cultural resource plan, being able to review that, that gives me some insight on what you guys are looking for. You guys have a certain knowledge or threshold of the potential of impact. A- and so those are areas that I, I have concern with, because as a previous tribal stock preservation officer, I would have been on-site for, for this, to, to do the assessment myself. And so without any of that information, it leaves this big gap for myself and for my colleagues who don't even get to look or even a- ask the questions about tribal cultural resources, because it's not information we can look at. And so it, it becomes this place where, you know, I, I have to rely on staff to go out there and understand what a tribal cultural resource is from somebody who's not from the tribal community. And so that's difficult. And so, um, this is why I bring up this plan. I've heard the, I've heard the cultural resources plan, but I've yet to see one from any applicant. So I don't know what, what is happening with it, who's doing it. If the tribe didn't comment on this project, are they involved with this plan? I don't know. And so it leaves this big gap of information for me that, uh, it doesn't sit well. And so that's not your responsibility to come up with that plan, but it is somebody's responsibility to create that plan. But by that time that plan happens, if we approve this application, there's no chance for me to review it or see it or make comment to it. And that's of concern. So that's where I kinda have some, some bit of reservation with the approval at this moment.
I understand. Um, I do want to mention that it was, um, passed on. As part of the process, um, when preparing the cultural resources survey that we do have, um, it is, there is consultation with local tribes. And they did request a copy of this study. I'm not sure, it is stated in the report. Um, and they didn't have any further, um, concerns or comments about the project. But, um, I do definitely understand the, the concerns.
Thank you.
Yeah, just wanted to add, um, we definitely appreciate and understand, um, your concerns, Commissioner Brown. Um, just wanted, maybe for clarification, um, there's two sets of mitigation measures, one for the cultural resources section and then also the tribal cultural resources section. The cultural resources measure is where you're seeing that preparation of a cultural resources awareness plan prior to construction. Um, what we do is when, after a project gets approved, if it does, once they submit for building permits, grading permits, um, those associated entitlements, we go through the conditions of approval and make sure that each of those things that are required are checked off. So that would be one, that they would be submitting to the community development department, and then it would usually be reviewed by the planner that, uh, processed the project. So that's one thing I just wanted to clarify. And then, um, secondly, for tribal cultural resources mitigation measure one, um, it does require the tribal cultural sensitivity training for all of the construction personnel. And it does have the language in here stating the training must be in according, according to standards of the NAHC, that's the Native American Heritage Commission, or culturally affiliated tribes. Training will address potential, um, for exposing subsurface resources. And it goes on to specify, um, specifically what it needs to cover. And we have worked with county council to develop that language so that it is enforceable and can be deemed appropriate mitigation. It also describes the need for tribal monitors, um, in any necessary environmental and/or safety awareness training. And then lastly, just wanted to note that we did fulfill our, um, AB fifty-two requirements. And we didn't receive a response back as far as formal consultation, but we did offer that. So sometimes unfortunately, we can't control the outcome of whether a tribe is able or has the resources to respond. But, um, just wanted to offer those couple of clarifications regarding mitigation and enforcement and the timing of when those actions would happen.
You know, thank you, I appreciate that. And, and my, my frustration is also with the lack of response from the tribes that are in the affiliated area as well. And so, um, that's something I, I rely on and then, but without a site visit, it does hamper my ability to, to see what's there on the ground as well. So that's, those are areas of concern that I, I've expressed and that I do have. Um, so I, I, I think going forward, what will help me is being able to have site visits. And, and so that's, I know that's, to do every project, that's a lot. But I, I think definitely when there's gonna be a, a, a big disturbance, that, that should be something. And I don't know what the nexus is to, for me to request a site visit, um, based on that type of ground disturbance or, or free to visit every project. You know, that's, that's what I need to understand too.
You are absolutely free to visit any project, and we would be happy to coordinate site visits for any planning commissioner who would like that. We, we really appreciate it. I know that we learn a lot when we're doing site visits. Um, and so I make sure that our planners are doing it for every discretionary permit that we have. And, um, it's awesome to, uh, to have the commissioners also put boots on the ground and see what, what's there. And don't forget, when you do a site visit, record your mileage, because that is reimbursable.
Thank you.
Chair, I just wanted to mention that we've had a hand raised. And, uh, for a while, uh, it was, it was still there during public comment, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
At the time, public comment is closed. So we'll continue with, um, any more questions from the commission before we decide if we wanna open public comment again. Thank you. Are there any further comments on this project? Seeing that, uh, I mean, I'm getting a, a lot of mixed, uh, thoughts on this, um, project. Are there any suggestions from the commission to, move the project down to a different date or to take action today?
Chair Chavez, also, if I might just, um, add a little information, federal law prohibits jurisdictions from denying telecommunication tower permits based on the radio frequencies or health-related or, um, uh, uh, reasons such as those. That cannot be a basis for our decision. Or for your decision.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, I apologize for my interruption, but I did have my hand raised during public comment and was not called on. Thank you.
Okay, um, we'll take, uh, we'll open public comment. So guest, uh, please state your first and last name.
Thank you, and I apologize, Angela Amaral. In the, in the project report, it says that it's a fifty by fifty foot leased area that's gonna be in a chain link fence. I wanted to ask, is that area, is, is there a hundred? Are they required to maintain the hundred-foot setback, defensible space setback as outlined in forty-two ninety-one? Or will it only be the fifty by fifty foot print that's gonna be, um, that's gonna be cleared for defensible space? I think it should be the hundred feet and, and radius, um, as we all have to do on our own private property. And then I would also like to request fire suppression on-site, since it is, since there seems to be a question on if the road is forty-two ninety compliant. It might be prudent to put fire suppression on-site at some of these projects as they're getting farther and farther into the wildlands. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, since public comment is open, uh, we're gonna take a look in the Zoom room to see if there's any more hands.
It's like Eric Snyder's hand is still up.
I thought I lowered it, but it must be up. Just following up on the fire issue, there have been a number of fires in that vicinity, really close in. And so I'm, uh, just like the previous speaker, I'm wondering if there's gonna be a larger setback, to keep fires from affecting the tower itself if they come in. And that would just be my last comment.
Okay, thank you. Any more hands in the Zoom room? Alright, no hands in the Zoom room, uh, in the chambers, if anyone wishes to speak. Alright. Since you're the applicant, you can do it out, outside of public comment, but you can definitely answer any of these questions. But I'll close public comment, um, and bring it back to the commission, so applicant.
I just wanna, um, there is a fire exten- extinguisher within the compound, um, so there is fire, um, suppression methods.
So there is fire suppression methods on site within the leased area, just to address that.
Thank you. So commission, if you guys want to entertain any motions or make any comments?
Yeah, I just wanted clarification, again, following up on Commissioner Brown's comments that I did have a note here also. That it was sent, notice was sent to 11 different tribes. And then Robinson Rancho Rio was the tribe that was identified who would respond to this project, but was there, there no response or was there any communication?
Yeah, we sent out the notification to all the tribes. The only tribe that responded was the Upper Lake Hub Emeto tribe deferring any comments to Robinson Rancho Rio. But Robinson Rancho Rio did not reach out to us and request consultation. Don't have any comments provided from them either. Yes, we did.
And just to add a little bit, we, the county does not identify the appropriate affiliated tribe. We send the request for review and notifications to all the tribes that have requested the notification.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, we have a whole bunch of them.
We also include all of the tribes when we send out an initial study for review as well as the hearing notice for this public hearing. That's sort of something extra and I use that word in the sense that it's not required by state laws, but we, we want tribal input. So we go ahead and take those extra steps too, in case they have comments that maybe we didn't get during the other process.
May I ask, is there something specific that would be helpful to answer your questions that we could request of, of this process so that you, to answer and so that we could move forward or?
No, the only, the only, the major concern is actually being able to see what the cultural resource assessment outlined. And so the cultural resource assessment will identify any scientific stone tools, any type of artifacts, that type of thing. Tribal cultural resources can't be identified in, within that report because usually the archaeologists or the firm doing that work is not the specialist in tribal cultural resources. So that's where the tribe's input is valuable in that process. The concern I've had is not being able to see those reports or even a redacted version of those reports to give me an idea of what's on the ground. So, so there are certain things I'm looking for as a cultural practitioner and as a commissioner that would alert me to the potential of there being a site, unrecorded site or recorded site. And so without being able to get on the ground, I can't rely on that in the documentation. Because the staff wouldn't be the expert in identifying tribal cultural resources. They're, they're going off the report they receive and developing their, their comments that are supplied to us. So other than being able to see a redacted version, and I've talked to other attorneys who say that can be done, but that's not something our council has adopted at this point to, to provide a redacted report that would keep sensitive site specific information out of that report for us to review to say, hey, there's these potentials. And so that's where a part of the frustration is, is, you know, I'm kind of in that position. And so I know it doesn't get looked at. So when we're doing this sequa analysis, we're not being able to respond to a portion of that analysis. We can't review it. And so that's where it leaves that room for me to sit there and go, man, did we miss something? Am I missing something? So it's just a process that needs to be figured out and, but I do rely on any tribal comments submitted to help make that determination because we can't look at, you know, what's submitted or anything like that. But other than that, it's not, anything staff is doing, staff has done great. And even when I wasn't in this seat, getting access to information has changed. And so things are supporting the process. It's just the response is something that'll help me from the tribes themselves.
I appreciate Commissioner Brown's comments. We do, we do offer every opportunity we can to solicit and welcome and encourage tribal input, but we fully respect their sovereignty to, to not have to. So we're not going to stalk them or hound them, but we do definitely consider the project improved when we are able to confer with the tribal representatives for their input. According to state law, we, we take that, that prohibition or the confidentiality of cultural reports very seriously and do not report and do not release those. We've made a couple of mistakes, but never do that on purpose. We hold that confidentiality very high as far as our priorities go. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Anything that you could do to encourage tribal input, we would welcome that effort.
And the last comment I make is the tribe might get involved in the cultural resource plan. You know, I don't, I don't know. It's up to the tribe. So I couldn't say at this moment that they're not going to be involved.
Last thing.
Also, if I could add one piece of information as a side note, we are working on a heritage resource plan with the Tippos. And that is in draft form. It's just a real beginning draft that, that I'm working with county council on. But we do plan to return that to the Tippo meeting, I think in November for their, their review and input.
Only other thing I was going to add. I don't know, I don't know if this helps you at all. I know it does not replace a tribal member going out and doing the pedestrian survey. But the ARC report didn't note any recorded resources within even like the half mile, which I actually often don't see that much because we do have so many resources in this county. And then I can also confirm that they also did not find any like lithic scatter, for example, which we commonly see. So without divulging any confidential information, I don't know if that's helpful to you at all, but just wanted to provide the information.
Yeah, no, that is, that is helpful. That is helpful to know. And those are the indicators I'd be looking for on, on the ground as well on a site visit. So thank you.
Well, for me on this project, you know, while, as I said, the, the road is an issue as far as between the access from whatever the, the main road is to, to get to the site. However, in this particular case, I guess I am leaning to with the safety of having a cell tower and having access, you know, also kind of weighs into the balance of this. The area does need to be able to be accessible via communications, especially in time of crisis. So again, mixed feelings on this, but.
Just a point of clarity, what is the setback? Is it, is it 50 feet or 100 feet?
I had somebody clarify upstairs with our building official. It is 100 feet.
It is 100 feet. Thank you.
So I'm ready to entertain a motion if we're at that point. Okay, I moved that the planning commission find that potential impacts associated with the project can be mitigated to less than significant through the implementation of mitigated negative declaration IS 23 dash 07 slash PL 25 dash 63 for vertical bridge VB BTS II LLC on property located at 6720 Leslie Place, Lucerne APN 006 003 dash 01 with the findings in the staff report dated October 9th, 2025.
A second.
I got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And one absent?
Okay, I moved that the planning commission approved major use permit PL dash 25 dash 63 slash UP 23 dash 03 for vertical, vertical bridge VB BTS II LLC on property located at 6720 Leslie Place, Lucerne APN 006 dash 003 dash 01, based on the findings and subject to the conditions in the staff report dated October 9th, 2025.
A second.
I got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And one absent. Both motions pass. Note, the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the planning commission's decision, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the planning commission's final determination. All right, so yeah.
Eric Chavez?
Yes.
If it's okay with the planning commission and staff, I am happy to leave you in our very capable hands for the next item of the climate adaptation plan. And I'm going to jump off and go back on vacation.
Very well. Thank you, Director.
Thank you and enjoy your vacation.
Thank you.
All right, before we take our non-timed item 7B, I'll request a break of 10 minutes. We'll be back at 11:00 AM. Thank you. Check, check. All right, welcome back. We'll continue our meeting. It is 11:00 AM. And we left off on our non-timed item 7B, presentation and discussion of Lake County Climate Action Plan.
Good morning, Commissioners. Shannon Walker Smith, Deputy Administrator, CDD. We are here today with an informational presentation on the climate adaptation plan. We have been out in the community doing a lot of engagement with different stakeholder groups. And we are currently on a tour of the municipal advisory council. and we are currently on a tour of the municipal advisory councils, gathering input as we make our final push towards a public draft of the Climate Adaptation Plan, which is part of but separate from at the same time and on a different timeline than the rest of the Lake County 2050 project. I am going to pass it over to Jaclyn from our Placeworks team for her presentation today.
Thank you Shannon, and I will share my screen. Before I get started, can everyone see the screen? Or the screen share?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, thank you. And good morning Planning Commissioners, I will go ahead and get started here. So for this presentation, we'll start with introductions and overview of the project team, provide an overview of the Climate Adaptation Plan, summarize the process and the results of the Climate Vulnerability Analysis, go over the pillars of landscape resilience, write an overview of the contents of the Climate Adaptation Plan, and then go over next steps in the process. So this project is being led by county staff through the Community Development Department and Office of Climate Resilience in partnership with the Lake County Resource Conservation District. My name is Jaclyn Prossman-Ror, and I'm the Project Manager on the Placeworks Consultant Team just for the Climate Adaptation Plan portion of the Lake County 2050 project. So to start off with a bit of background, this effort began with the establishment of the Community Risk Reduction Authority in 2018, and then the formation of the Lake County Office of Climate Resiliency in 2022. This enabled a partnership to form to go after and receive the California Adaptation Planning Grant for the Equitable Climate Safe Lake Project in 2023. Later that same year, the Pillars of Landscape Resilience were adopted as the Foundation for Resilience across the county. And then in 2024, the project team began developing the Climate Vulnerability Analysis, the Countywide Evacuation Study, and the Climate Adaptation Plan concurrent with the Lake County 2050 General Plan Update. So now I'll provide an overview of the Climate Adaptation Plan. The goal of the Climate Adaptation Plan is to develop a roadmap for building climate resilience across Lake County, including the cities of Lakeport and Clear Lake. And in the context of this plan, adaptation means making changes in response to current or future conditions, such as increased frequency and intensity of climate-related hazards, usually to reduce harm and to take advantage of new opportunities. And then resilience means the ability of communities to withstand, recover, and learn from past disasters to strengthen future response and recovery efforts. So this process identified the most vulnerable communities, natural systems, and built assets through the Climate Vulnerability Analysis and strategies and actions in the Adaptation Plan itself will integrate with the existing pillars of landscape resilience to create a cohesive approach for resilience across all sectors. The CAP will provide practical and feasible solutions to reduce climate risks considering existing resources, gaps, and capacity constraints with a clear pathway for implementation. So this plan is being developed based on the four-step process outlined in the California Adaptation Planning Guide. During the first phase of the project, the project team initiated defining populations, natural systems, economic drivers, infrastructure, and service systems vital to the community, and then which climate change hazards would likely affect these populations and community assets. Phase two was focused on assessing vulnerability or the degree to which populations and community assets will be affected by climate change hazards. The development of the Climate Vulnerability Analysis was the main work product of this phase. And then we're currently in phase three of the process, which focuses on defining the adaptation framework, which are the pillars of landscape resilience, and developing strategies and actions for each of those pillars. So in the next phase, phase four, that will focus on implementation, where funding will be secured for programs and actions listed in the plan itself, and implementation will be monitored and evaluated, and then the plan may be adjusted over time to account for capacity and the needs of the Lake County community. The Adaptation Plan is intended to be a living document that supports other plans and programs throughout Lake County, and therefore integrates with several other plans to do so. This image shows six of the plans that provide information for the Adaptation Plan or are opportunities to integrate information from the Adaptation Plan process into city and county operations. So just to go into a bit more detail about these six different plans that relate to the CAP, the Lake County General Plan Health and Safety Element uses the Climate Vulnerability Analysis to inform long-term climate resilience policies and programs countywide. The city's safety elements can also use the Climate Vulnerability Analysis for the same purpose. The Climate Adaptation Plan can use the Community Wildfire Prevention Plan to coordinate wildfire fuel reduction projects and evacuation protections. The Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan can act as a tool to implement the Adaptation Plan with the Adaptation Plan's long-term climate-focused strategies and the LHMP's near-term hazard reduction projects, which are updated about every five years. The Capital Improvement Plan of the county can also act as an implementation tool with the Climate Vulnerability Analysis and strategies informing infrastructure planning projects for resilience. The Drought Resilience Plan is a topic-focused plan supporting over 80 small water systems in the county, and the Adaptation Plan can provide a broad framework for implementing drought-preparedness strategies. And finally, the Blue Ribbon Committee for Rehabilitation of Clear Lake provides recommendations for rehabilitating the lake, which can be incorporated into the Adaptation Plan to support the economy, ecosystems, and heritage of the area. So now I'll briefly go over the Climate Vulnerability Analysis, and I do want to note that the Climate Vulnerability Analysis is available on the Lake County 2050 website. So to start off with, what is a vulnerability analysis? According to the California Adaptation Planning Guide, the primary guidance document on these types of analyses in the state, a vulnerability analysis is an assessment of how a changing climate may harm a community and which elements are most vulnerable to its effects based on an assessment of exposure, sensitivity, potential impacts, and adaptive capacity. The project team used a four-step approach, illustrated here, for evaluating vulnerabilities. So step one, identifying exposure to hazards. Step two, analyzing the sensitivity of populations and community assets and potential impacts of the hazards. Step three, evaluating adaptive capacity, which is the ability of populations or community assets to prepare for, respond to, and recover from hazards using existing resources, and then pulling all of those together to assess vulnerability. So the vulnerability analysis evaluated how 91 different population groups and community assets across unincorporated Lake County and the cities of Lakeport and Clear Lake were vulnerable to eight different climate change hazards. These hazards included agriculture and forestry, pests and diseases, drought, extreme temperatures, flooding, human health hazards, landslides and debris flows, severe weather, and wildfire and smoke. Here are the key findings from the Climate Vulnerability Analysis. Wildfire, smoke. Wildfire and smoke create the most vulnerabilities across sectors countywide. The most vulnerable populations are people of color and immigrant communities, financially constrained households, those with chronic illnesses or disabilities, older adults, people with high outdoor exposure, such as unhoused persons or outdoor workers, and persons in tribal communities. The most vulnerable community assets are energy and community, communication, infrastructure, and services, homes, especially older and manufactured homes, transportation infrastructure, including both state highways and local roads, agriculture as an economic driver, and outdoor recreation and tourism as economic drivers as well. So city and county staff contributed to and reviewed the Climate Vulnerability Analysis at each step in the process, and again, it's now posted on the Lake County 2050 website. We've already received feedback from the community related to the Climate Vulnerability Analysis. These are a few quotes from one of the open-ended questions from a countywide survey asking community members of their ideas for resilience in Lake County. We heard the importance of rehabilitating Clear Lake, undergrounding electrical lines, and regular control burns, and the use of cattle and livestock grazing to limit fuel for wildfires. For populations, we heard making local homeownership a priority and ensuring all voices are heard and considered in this process. And then for projects, specific ideas, we heard finishing the Middle Creek Flood Plain and Wetland Reconnection and creating microgrids at water plants, shelters, and emergency operation centers. And then more recently, as Shannon was describing, the project team has facilitated several stakeholders stakeholder discussions, hosted a Community Risk Reduction Authority Town Hall, and held city and county staff coordination meetings to get their input on successes, gaps, and potential adaptation solutions for the CAP document. So the project team took the results of the Climate Vulnerability Analysis, the feedback we've received to date, and integrated them with the Pillars of Landscape Resilience, which I'll briefly go over now. So adopted in 2023, the Pillars of Landscape Resilience Framework is based on the Tahoe Central Sierra Initiative, and with feedback from tribal members, the images for the pillars were adapted to better reflect Lake County. This framework recognizes the interdependence of ecological and social systems and provides metrics for measuring progress towards ecosystem and community resilience. There are 10 pillars total representing desired landscape outcomes. These include air quality, biodiversity conservation, carbon sequestration, economic diversity, fire-adapted communities, fire dynamics, forest resilience, social and cultural well-being, water security, and wetland integrity. Each of these components are being incorporated into the Adaptation Plan itself, and now I'll briefly provide an overview of the contents of the CAP. So the plan itself covers the unincorporated areas of Lake County along with the incorporated cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport with a long-term planning horizon similar to that of a general plan. The plan will contain background sections summarizing the eight climate-related hazards evaluated in the Climate Vulnerability Analysis and local knowledge and lived experiences from community engagement across the county. The resilient strategies and actions will be based on the pillars of landscape resilience, identifying feasible solutions that provide multiple benefits. The project team recognizes the great work that's already happening across the county with multiple organizations, and therefore will highlight existing partnerships and programs wherever possible. The resilient strategies themselves are organized by goal, strategy, and action. The goals are broad outcomes or end states describing desired future conditions. The strategies are policies, programs, and approaches to achieving the goal. And then the actions are implementation steps for each of the strategies. And each action contains a bit more detailed information for implementation, including responsible and supporting agencies, timeframe for implementation, general cost estimates, and potential funding sources. The Adaptation Plan will contain one goal per pillar, including the following. So for air quality, advancing community resilience to smoke and poor air quality events. Biodiversity conservation, the county's network of native species and ecological communities is healthy, abundant, and distributed across the landscape. Carbon sequestration, enhanced carbon sequestration capacity across forests, ag and working lands, and wetlands. Economic diversity, a sustainable and resilient natural resource-based economy. Fire-adapted communities, fire-prepared and resilient communities with the capacity to manage desired fire and suppress unwanted fire. For fire dynamics, fires fire burns in ecologically beneficial and socially accessible way. For forest resilience, resilient forest ecosystems that provide essential ecosystem services, support cultural heritage, and sustain economic opportunities. Social and cultural well-being, a community connected with nature to recreate, maintain, and improve overall health. Water security, reliable, safe, and equitable access to clean potable water for all Lake County residents or communities. Wetland integrity, protected and restored wetlands and riparian ecosystems providing essential ecosystem services, climate resilience benefits, and key linkages between upland and aquatic systems. So this slide shows example strategy concepts for four of the different pillars. For biodiversity conservation, we have strengthening habitat connectivity and interagency coordination, developing invasive species management program, and protecting and restoring aquatic habitat and water quality. For water security, we have diversifying water supply sources, improving drought-preparedness, and strengthening collaborative water quality monitoring and response. Under social and cultural well-being, concepts are integrating public health into emergency planning and outreach, expanding access to climate resilient resources and resilience hubs, and strengthening tribal co-management of natural resources. Under economic diversity, concepts are supporting climate resilient ag practices, fostering healthy and sustainable tourism and recreation, and ensuring equitable hazard-preparedness access for small businesses. So as far as next steps, this timeline shows the overall CAP developments starting in 2022 to present. As mentioned previously, the project began in 2023 with outreach associated with the Lake County General Plan Update occurring in 2023 and 2024. The Climate Vulnerability Analysis was completed earlier this year, and as I said, it's now available on the Lake County 2050 website. And then we're currently in the plan development stage, conducting outreach and engagement activities and drafting the strategies and actions for the plan. So once adopted, the implementation phase will begin, which will likely be this winter and beyond. And next steps, we're, as we've mentioned a couple of times, we're currently conducting outreach with interested parties, including service providers and stakeholders. We'll also be releasing the Adaptation Plan for review by local tribes before the formal public review period occurs. We'll also be holding other study sessions with city councils, the county Board of Supervisors, and the Lake County 2050 General Plan Advisory Committee and local area plan advisory committees. And we also encourage you and community members to visit the project website at lakecounty2050.org. So before I hand it back over to Shannon, we're hoping to get your input on the Climate Adaptation Plan, and therefore have one discussion question for your commission to consider as you provide us with your comments. So the main question we're asking you is what are your biggest concerns related to implementing climate hazard mitigation, adaptation, or resilience strategies in the county? And I will finish up my presentation, and then hoping to have you all answer this discussion question. I want to say thank you for your time, and I will turn it back over to Shannon to facilitate the discussion.
Thank you Jaclyn. Jaclyn and I would be happy to answer any questions and look forward to your input.
Just a wonderment of who will be responsible for implementing the plan, and how will it be funded?
So it's a combination of lots of county departments, partners, city departments, as well as this is a regional plan. So the plan itself outlines responsible agencies and potential funding sources. It does have a very large scope and is a long-range plan, so therefore the implementation will take place over many years as we're able to acquire the funding resources to implement the strategies.
And I understand lots of people are involved, but who is the? but who is the one person or one agency who'd make sure that all the other, you know, gears are moving? And does the accountability and the assessment and that kind of thing? Is there one, maybe not one person, but one agency for whom that is the primary focus?
It's community developments plan, so we'll lead on that. We're working very closely with the Office of Climate Resiliency and Terry Logston on this project, as well as the RCD and other agency partners, but CDD will own the plan.
I think, yeah, like it is a very wide plan, attacking many different deficiencies here in the county. I think it's a great idea. You know, that it was in 2023, so it's given us a couple of years to get to this point that we are today, identifying all those issues. And I don't know, I'm just excited to see how it's implemented and just kind of see what changes it brings for the communities. And because, I mean, our communities are changing every day as it is as well. So you know what new issues might come up and how those can be implemented into the plan as well. You know, the main thing here in our county is that fire and are the fires that happen during our fire season. And it does, you know, how it affects all the, you know, the population of workers that, you know, county employees or, you know, private companies and field workers. And at the end of the day, it affects everyone. So I think it's a good idea to kind of attack those issues. But I think issues like that, for example, like the fire, like the smoke inhalation and all that, how would it just be more like, would it be implemented as in like more, like making people more aware of the concern or of the, you know, side effects of this? Or like maybe sending letters to like, you know, like, for example, like for field workers that the owners of the venues or owners of, you know, that they, you know, give warning to their employees and say, hey, like, you know, we're not going to be working today for this reason. Or how, I'm just kind of wondering how that would be implemented or what the plan for that is.
Yeah, I don't have the plan in front of me, but smoke-related hazard is likely to be addressed through education in the community about the impacts and working with business owners for that understanding.
Yeah, because I know that also on like on our phones, like we'll get notification, like what the air quality is in your area, kind of like weather. So I think, you know, I'm always looking at that because I do work out outside most of the time. So it's important to keep in mind, because some people, they just kind of brush it off like it's nothing, you know? And then next thing you know, you have like a little cough or something. And so, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
It's good to think about. Thank you.
Anything else from the commission? Or did any of you want to provide input on that discussion question? We could bring that question potentially back up onto the screen, Jaclyn.
Yeah, before you do that, I'd just like to add too, I'm really, I'm excited to see the plan and look at the implementation. I did, wanted to acknowledge the pillars of landscape resilience. That's a great idea. I've been hearing in the community the discussion about co-management for the first time with tribal communities and tribal governments, and that's an exciting conversation. And I say that as the longest stewards of the land, there's a lot of knowledge to be gained in those conversations. And I'm glad to hear that that's a big part of this conversation and this plan. And so I'm excited to see it go forward and see what comes out of it.
We are prioritizing tribal input by releasing a lot of drafts of these documents to the tribes prior to the public. So that has been a strategy that we're implementing throughout this process. And we're actually in October hoping to do, we have some documents out for review with the tribes now, but we're also hoping to do a couple of review sessions with tribes where we can kind of like walk through both the climate adaptation plan and some other documents related to the general plan for their review and input.
That's great to hear. And I wanted to ask, were there any, anybody from the archaeological community involved? I was at a presentation maybe fifteen years ago at Robinson, and there was an archaeologist that talked about land use and what he was presenting on, I can't remember the name. I'm trying to find the name. He looked at the point of settlement of California, how the land changed. And what they were doing was drilling core samples, looking at the land. When there was prescribed, traditional prescribed burning, there was less risk of wildfire. And so today, wildfire is an issue because that prescribed burning has stopped. And so I need to find that information because I think that would be helpful. And so that's why I'm asking if there's any archaeologists involved or, you know, looking at some of that historical data that might be able to support climate change and adaptation.
No archaeologists involved in the project currently, but we're open to all partners and input.
To answer the question that was up on the screen, my biggest concern is impeding community health and well-being and growth and business and the economy of Lake County with the implementation of the project. So with that, I just, I look forward to it enhancing and supporting both community and business growth and development in Lake County.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission on this question or on the plan in general?
One big concern with climate hazard, you know, we get a little bit of everything here in California. But especially focusing here in Lake County, I think the, whenever we get like, when it's the rainy season, we can really see it on the roads. Proper drainage is, seems to be like an issue that I've noticed. I mean, I live in Clear Lake and they're doing a lot of like new roads and, you know, fixing a bunch of them. There's still a way to go, you know, a long way to go. But there is, you know, those, that area is kind of, you know, taking that action to fix those roads. And I've been seeing it here in the county as well, but it's just, there's a lot of roads that are not really paved at all. So they get washed out and then there's people that are stuck in, you know, landslides and things like that in the more hilly areas. So I guess just kind of like taking into consideration like the flooding of streets and then, you know, the older population having, you know, not having access if they need, if there's an emergency because there's a huge puddle that, you know, that they can't get over or something like that. And it's, sometimes they can be kind of maintained. Sometimes they're private driveways. But I think it's just kind of like looking into the transportation issue so that people can get from point A to point B in the rainy season.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Good point.
Oh, yeah. N forty-two ninety, right?
Roads, roads, roads.
Well, I just say that this is a fabulous project. I think the biggest concern would be to make sure that everybody knows what's going on with all these things. It's hard to disseminate all the information, even as much outreach as you do, what's happening, what's available, and how people can participate, so.
Yes, and to that point, thank you very much for coming to the Middletown Area Town Hall this evening.
Sure am.
To do a presentation, yes.
And I saw Sharon last night at the BEVAC meeting as well.
Yes, thank you for the outreach.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, just the concern too for me is just the buy-in from community. You know, having the information dissemination is big. And so I would just express to keep continuing to do the outreach, talking to anybody who will provide some feedback. And I think it's definitely a step in the right direction. It's just about getting it out there to everybody, so.
Thank you. I believe that's all we have for you today.
Okay.
Thank you, Jaclyn.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Jaclyn and Shannon. Moving on to our department update. Oh, sorry, I forgot. We have to open up for a public comment. Thank you. So we'll be opening public comment for this item, seven B, our presentation for Lake County Climate Action Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Margot Cambara. Lovely presentation, thank you. It would be a fabulous tool to have it posted on the Lake County 2050 website. Great.
We'll make sure that happens. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Also, just a few questions and comments. I am still not clear on how the various county plans congeal. Like in Lord of the Rings, is there one to rule them all? Because, oh my goodness, using one and how it interacts with another, it's like, eh. And so Commissioners Zoller asked a very important question, like, well, implementation, how is that going to work? And who is accountable? So CDD. The other thing would be, it'd be good to set metrics. What is success going to look like? That would be very helpful. And this climate adaptation plan prompts proactive water security measures. A big opportunity for Lake County. And the Big Valley groundwater basin is already subject to state monitoring. Lake County Vice Chair Rasmussen last night commented at the Big Valley Advisory Council that if groundwater is not managed well, the state could step in. It is in Lake County's best interest to manage its resources, especially groundwater, well. And the support of the Planning Commission would be significant on these suggestions. First, promote smart and sustainable use of water for ag and development. Two, promote conservation, drought management, and preparation for drought and use of technology to conserve water. Three, review discretionary permit application for smart and sustainable use of water. The Planning Commission's support to revise county ordinances, regulations to make permities accountable for water usage estimates is important. And for example, the Planning Commission's interest in reviewing annual reports for permitted projects aligns with this suggestion. And those are just a few. I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. We'll take a look in the Zoom room. All right, we have a couple of hands there. We'll take, can I get a name? Terry, please tell your first and last name, and you'll be given three minutes. Okay, could you check the mute button on your computer? Uh, well, oh. Should we take another, another hand and then see if we can figure that one out later? What's the name on that one? Guest, you've been asked to unmute.
Mr. Chair, I didn't have my hand raised and I was unmuted, but I will provide a comment. Angela Emerald. And I want to thank Shannon for coming to the town halls and giving the presentation and asking all of the questions. One other thing that I thought of afterwards, because we didn't get to see the questions beforehand, one other thing that I thought of is that if we could try to work on partnerships with public land agencies to start creating fire breaks along the Wui. Along North Shore, we have a lot of area that borders BLM. And I know there was talks previously about creating a fire break between those lands and residents. So that would just be one other thing I would like to request. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Betsy Khan, you've been asked to unmute. And you'll have three minutes. Please say your first and last name.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Betsy Khan. Speaking to you on behalf of the Public Information Center in Upper Lake. But I want to ask the consultants to give as much attention as possible to the use of internet capacity for all forms of work, remote work, meeting, venues, and especially for the discussion about changing county ordinances and policies. One thing that Shannon said at the East Region Town Hall was that the survey, which Angela said they had not seen ahead of time, the activity for launching this month-long outreach process was just put on the website. They didn't do a whole lot to let people know that it was taking place. And this can have tremendous impacts on everyone. But the intention of reducing greenhouse gas emissions as well as educating and including as many people as possible can be maximized by using remote technology, especially for such secondary, but equally important venues as the boards, committees, and commissions created by legislative bodies, the cities and the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any more hands in the Zoom room?
Terry Logston was trying to log in and comment. She's working remotely and her microphone is not working. She just wanted me to convey that we will continue to seek funding for implementation once the plan is adopted.
Okay, thank you. I don't see anyone here in the chambers for a public comment for this item. So we'll close public input. And, well, I guess there's no action on this one. So thank you for the presentation. I kind of skipped a little bit on that. But, so moving on to our department update, I don't know if there's any department update.
We have no update.
And that leaves with adjourning the meeting at eleven thirty-eight. So thank you.
Thank you.